Good evening, everyone. We will begin. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Holder. Trustee Koteenek.
Here.
Trustee Kukler.
Here.
Trustee McCarty.
Here.
President Livingston.
Here. We do have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag,
for two under our agenda, some reporting to do, but we also are at this time going to hold a public hearing. Proposed special service area SSA number 10, private improvements, MI Homes Mason Point subdivision. I think, Counselor, I might ask you to describe the rationale and reason for this hearing and what is required of us. Thank you.
You're welcome. The ability of municipality to undertake a special service area is guided by a statute in Illinois statute, and the Illinois statute is careful to require two significant steps in order to actually effectuate a special service area. The first step is the deliverance of notice and the opportunity for people within the area that will be compose the special service area to come and, along with anyone else, and testify at an open meeting. And this is the hearing, the first hearing, and after the first hearing, there'll be another waiting period, and then the village will take action, direct action on the special service area.
Thank you. This is a special service area related to the, again, Mason Point subdivision. It is to fund the cost of maintenance for the private infrastructure. It is part of the agreement when we develop that and approve that with the developer, MI Homes. Charity, can you remind the public and the board as to how this fits in with the agreement as it relates to MI Homes paying for this part of it?
Certainly. So, as you mentioned, the SSA is established to provide funds to maintain the private infrastructure, which otherwise will be the obligation of the homeowners association for the townhomes and single-family component of the Mason Point development. If, for some reason in the future, the HOA were, in the unlikely event they were unable to maintain the infrastructure, then the village would have these SSA funds and this tool available to provide that service and step in. The initial, per the development agreement, the initial fund balance is to be $50,000. MI Homes is funding that initial balance, so they'll be providing us a check for that. So although we're adopting the special service area at the conclusion of this process, we will not need to levy funds to provide that initial fund balance as required per the development agreement because MI Homes has said that they are going to provide that initial balance.
Thank you, Charity. And at this time, I would open up for any public comments related to this SSA number 10, and certainly after, answer any questions of the board should they have it. But are there any public commentary on the SSA?
My name is Don Johnston. I live at 240 South La Grange Road for the last 50 years. And I just had a question. I read through the stuff that came with the agenda and so forth. And if I understand it correctly, the 50 grand is a minimum balance that would be maintained for the services, and to the extent that it's necessary, it would be replenished by the village taxing the HOA members. Is that right? Okay. What if there's a mass sort of resistance to paying that fund? You simply stop maintaining them, or?
So the SSA would become a part of their property tax bill. So if in the village, if in the future the village had to expend the $50,000 fund balance that we currently will have at the beginning, and we needed to replenish it, it would be on the tax bill for all of those properties as part of their property tax.
So there's no way that we could be stiffed in the process?
Right. It becomes part of their property tax bill.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for the question. Any other comments or questions from the public on this SSA? All right. Board, this is not an action item this evening. This is an intake session principally for our fellow citizenry, but do you have any questions on this at this time for our team? I know you've had the materials ahead of time, so... Trustee Augustine?
Yeah, I just had one question about the, am I pre-funding it? Why would they do that? Great. I just wondered.
To, my guess is to, so they can sell more units without people thinking they immediately are going to be taxed.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing and certainly keep our public involved and informed as that very important development continues forward. And we like seeing that construction certainly as it's happening now. All right. A couple of other things here. This past weekend, Andre and I were able to participate with local officials and many others in the West Central Municipal Conference Legislative Agenda Legislative Priorities Conference. That was attended by the new Senate President, Don Harmon, and several other elected officials. They basically approved a series of priorities that they will be taking to Springfield, certainly restoring our local government distributive fund, LGDF revenue. And our own Senator, Senator Steve Landec, has introduced a bill to restore that 10% to the LGDF, which has been diminished in recent years. There's five altogether. Continuing public pension, safety reforms and consolidation, which has certainly been part of what Governor Pritzker has rolled out in terms of consolidation. Eliminating or reducing the administrative fee for local sales taxes. This is introduced by Representative DeLuca and other legislators to change this as part of the Illinois Department of Revenue Fee, that Lou is certainly very aware of. Increased funding for capital improvements, transportation and planning resources. That includes CMAP, PACE, Metro, MPC, and other stakeholders in terms of the capital bill and making sure that gets to local priorities. Putting an end to the federal preemption of small cell wireless deployment, and they support legislation that would preserve the regulatory rights of states and local governments on that. Support of non-home rule sales tax. So this is legislation that relates to a municipal board and councils imposing a non-home rule sales tax in point 2.5% or quarter of a percent increments, up to 1% without going out to referendum, which is currently in the statutes. And those are the basic five. Really, the overarching situation there is to preserve as much as possible local control over the governance of villages and towns, and that's certainly something that we've participated in with Springfield, was able to meet with several legislators, legislators on that, and we'll keep people certainly up to speed as we go along. We have Restaurant Week taking place in La Grange. Very important week that is coming, Friday, February 21st through Sunday, March 1st. It's fun to plan out your week, hit as many restaurants as possible. Shopping and dining local is so important to La Grange, and our residents and neighbors do such a good job of it. We want to make sure we get out the word. For more information, we've got Nancy Cummings here from the La Grange Business Association. We want to make sure that you have all the information you need. Received a letter here, passed it on to the board, but certainly want the public to know about a town hall meeting to discuss issues surrounding 5G small cell wireless technology in our community, and that will be at the Corral at Lyons Township High School South Campus this Thursday, February 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00. And it looks like there is different information that they're going to be passing out at that meeting if that is a topic that's of interest to you. Another one of our very own senators, Kimberly Lightford. She is somebody who represents part of La Grange and has sent us some materials regarding available positions, census takers. This is the year of the census, as we've mentioned before here, and this is for census field supervisors, census takers, recruiting assistants, clerk or operations. And visit 2020census.gov/jobs. And she also has information on her website, so we'll make sure we connect with that. But thank you to Senator Lightford for that information. And let's see, we have also, it's happened again. We, for the 25th year in a row, have won an award. And we can never take this for granted because it is competitive and it takes a lot of work, and that is the Government Finance Officers' Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget document. This GFOA assesses how well the village offers a budget as a tool, as a policy document, a financial plan, and communications device. They assert that the attainment of this award is also viewed favorable by credit rating agencies. This is a significant accomplishment as La Grange is only one of 1,600 entities in the United States and Canada were presented with this award. And as a frame of reference, there are over 6,000 units of government in Illinois. So we would say on behalf of the board, certainly to Lou Ciparone, to Andre, to Joe Muniz, thank you and congratulations. And this is one of the most important things our body does, is to present a budget, and you really provide a lot of credibility to all of us who care about that, which we all do. And so, thank you for that. Yeah. Last item, two items. We have, I wanted to speak about stormwater management. We indicated that we went into closed session at our last board meeting to discuss a matter as it relates to the stormwater management and an agreement with the MWRD. Our review of that continues. And basically, it's been a little while since we've given an update, so I'll be brief here, but I want to fill in some information as it moves along. This, as you recall, goes back to 2010, 2011, 2014, when there were severe rain events. We've had a few since that come close to that, but those were real significant damaging rain events, which we began engagement and study with the MWRD. As to our 50th Street Stormwater Project, I would say there are about three different phases. There was the legal battle and initial design, which we have achieved settlement, and we're out of that phase. The middle phase would be the due diligence, design, agreement of the various moving parts, which we'll discuss in a moment. And then the final is the actual construction. So we're in the middle part of this. We've gotten out of the arguments, the discussions, the lawsuits, and we're now to the point of learning more with our public partners. And that includes the municipal organizations in our area, the MWRD, and weekly meetings, as it turns out, with Hanson, the quarry operator to our east and on our border. The three major parts of this stormwater project include the 50th Street Stormwater Pipe, which would be new construction from approximately Stone Avenue eastward to East Avenue, and that would be constructed and funded by La Grange based on referendum monies that we achieved in 2015. The second part of it is the north pipe that goes around the north side of the quarry, which was achieved through settlement monies from the lawsuit that occurred in 2019. And the third part is a reservoir next to the McCook Ditch, which would be funded in the construction part of that by the MWRD, which is a significant investment on their part, including the acquisition of that property. The board is right now looking at the agreement between the MWRD and the village to make sure that, as important as this project is on the construction side, that the necessary protections are in place to make sure that the village has the resources, the skills, if you will, to maintain such facilities in the future, what's fair to the village in the future in terms of what we would have to maintain. And that's the point of back and forth between the MWRD and the village. And so this is something that we are, of course, looking at very carefully. The need still is there. We're only, there's only a matter of time before another major rain event comes along, and we do feel a commitment to really improve the situation there. And we believe we have a plan that will do that. Water is extremely long-term in terms of its perspective, and we're seeing that on the lake shores of Lake Michigan. We're doing things now as a village that will improve the situation years from now, and you have to start somewhere. It only gets more expensive. It only gets more damaging. And so, we're going to try to manage the appropriate risk and cost now so that we can avoid the damaging floodwaters in the future. And so, that's something we take very seriously. We haven't achieved something we're comfortable with yet. We're asking ourselves the questions as we should be. And again, can't thank the MWRD enough. They really, that is a modern miracle of local government. This is a body that looks beyond each election cycle, beyond each storm event, when people get elevated in their concern, and then when things calm down, the MWRD is still at the wheel, really making their plans for the deep tunnel project, which is, again, akin to the aqueducts. It's a long-term, expensive, important, life-changing event for the western suburbs certainly. So, to be continued, this is something that, again, is measured in months and years, and we'll manage the risk as best as we can and report back to the village and our fellow citizenry often, and as best we can as we develop these agreements. So, no action on that right now. We'll continue to talk about that as we go down the road. At the next meeting, that will be my last meeting as village president, so we will, after doing our regular set of business, conduct an election for my replacement, and we will do that in a form very similar and prescribed and transparent. So with that, Madam Village Manager, I turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. The village hall will be closed on Monday, February 17th. In recognition of President's Day, a full complement of public safety personnel will be available in the event of an emergency, and regular village hall office hours will resume on Tuesday, February 18th at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Andre from the board? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you read the items on the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they have already been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, agreement, auditing services. Item B, purchase, spring flower planting program. Item C, agreement, engineering for concrete repairs to the fire department apparatus floor. Item D, resolution, revisions to the personnel manual regarding anti-harassment and sexual harassment policy. Item E, minutes of the Village of La Grange Board of Trustees' regular meeting, Monday, January 27, 2020. And item F, consolidated voucher, 200210.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And we're advised by the applicants under current business A ordinance variation, minimum required front yard, Theodore and Andrea Hadley, 1,000 West Arlington Avenue, that they have pulled their application for this meeting to be considered at the February 24th meeting, which is certainly their right. I guess awaiting full attendance of the board, if that is fine with the rest of the board. Or, Mr. Counselor, is there anything else I need to do there procedurally? All right. Yes, sir?
Mr. President, just a quick question on the Plan Commission and that ordinance. I noticed that it did not pass Plan Commission on a three-to-one vote. Just curious, how many voting commissioners are on the Plan Commission? Because it seems hard to go into a meeting with only four commissioners needing four votes. So maybe just how does that process work?
There are, is it six or seven members of the zoning board of appeals, and they had at that particular meeting, which I think Trustee Augustine was at, four. And I think that's probably why the applicant wanted to pull it for tonight, because, you know, that is within their right to expect the full attention of their fellow citizenry when they have a project up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Koteenek. All right. With that, we will move to item number four on our agenda, which is public comments regarding items that are on our agenda this evening. All right. Seeing none, item number five, consideration of the consent agenda and vote. Let's seek a motion.
I'd like to move, we accept the consent agenda? Second.
Thank you, Trustee McCarty and Koteenek and Gail. It's moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, as usual, and as I've previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on the voucher items related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Trustee McCarty. Aye. Kukler.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Gail.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
With that, the consent agenda is approved. Item number seven, public comments regarding matters not on our agenda this evening.
It's me again, Don Johnston from 240 South La Grange Road. I just have a question about the new traffic signal, you know, speed signs that are on La Grange Road in the sections south of the facet. So there's one on my corner, and I'm just curious if there's some sort of information that's, I assume that we're collecting information at that station so we can download and see, you know, how many cars are going, 65, 55, 45, things like that. Is that true?
We've got a couple of different spots, actually, where I think we've put that up. Chief, do you want to comment on Mr. Johnston's question?
Yes, sir. I believe the ones you're referring to, we are not collecting data. We put them up to help change driver behavior. Typically, when we're going to collect data, we'll be doing it for a project or for some type of study, but in that case, it was more just to get the speed signs out, make drivers aware, and get them to slow down as they come into the downtown area and as they leave the downtown area.
What do you think, what do you observe? What do you believe is the case? Has it made a difference or not?
Considering I drive a marked vehicle and I go through the area, yes, I see people as they see their speed displayed. They are slowing down. That's not scientific. That's merely my observation driving through the area, but typically, that's what we see when people see their speed flashing on an electronic sign. They tend to slow down, be a little bit more aware, and that's the purpose that we have them up for right now.
There was a time, some time ago, when we had a trailer that we used for that purpose, and I was still living on La Grange Road because I've been there for a very long time. And that trailer had a little strobe on it, and it would generate a bright white flash when somebody was driving over the limit. And I would have people come around the block, and if I'm working the yard, they would stop me and say, hey, did they take a picture of me? And they're worried about that. But I don't think anybody's worried about the signs that are up there for notification only. And I'm not out there sitting in a chair by the sign, but I do have a dog, and we go out a couple of times a day. And I see, I see, I think the highest I've seen is 54 on that sign. 40 isn't that unusual. 35 is fairly common. I'm just wondering, are we still in the mode where we don't ticket anybody that isn't going over 35 miles an hour?
Policy per se, that is up to the officer's discretion, but I can tell you, we're doing a lot of traffic stops in that area. I do monitor the activity of the officers, and we're actually, due to a recent complaint, we're spending a lot of area, or a lot of time in the area of 47th and La Grange Road as well. But the officers have been making stops on La Grange Road. Unfortunately, I had the number in front of me. I think it was upwards of 800 to 1,000 stops in 2019 on La Grange Road. So we're making traffic stops. We are stopping them. But then it's up to the officer and their discretion whether they want to issue a warning, a citation, et cetera.
All right. I just, I assumed that, silly me, I assumed that that gizmo was collecting data and that you were able to analyze it and decide what times of day and things like that. It was sensible to put out somebody to pay attention. But I would say further than that, that there are times lately when it's suddenly black. And I don't know if that has to do with it running out of juice, or if it's in some way defective, needs repair, or what.
We were looking into that. I passed it down to chain of command. I don't have an answer for you, but due to dark days of winter, it is solar powered, so my guess was we had a few days in there with no sun, that it may have lost power.
No storage. It runs only if it's juiced up fairly recently then. Okay. I do observe that the receiver is pointed north, which is pretty much the only direction where you don't get any sun. So it must work on whatever the surrounding light is then, because the direct sunlight isn't coming from the north.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. We do have to, with La Grange Road and Ogden Avenue particularly, it's a constant enforcement effort because truck drivers turn over. They come through the area. They're new. They come off of both the major expressways. They're really not supposed to go over, what is it, Chief, five miles? You know, unless they're delivering something. So they can't use it to cut through La Grange or other communities. And we're talking to other communities about reinforcing that. We did lower the speed limit, you may remember, on La Grange Road. And again, that is meant to cast a wider net on those who would speed, but again, you get ahead of it, and then it flares up, and we have to get back to it off and on. So our team, our law enforcement team does a great job, and it is something that we'll always have to do. We also, I believe, have one on around some of the schools, and we, of course, had the new stoplight and on Willow Springs Road as well. as well, over by South Campus. But traffic safety is important, and we're going to, we kind of blitz every now and then. Sometimes we have trucks that decide LaGrange Road isn't good enough, and they want to go through side streets. And we're going to really have to watch that when East Avenue is under construction in the coming year, because that'll be nice when it's back open. That is a truck route, but they'll want to, with 294 under construction and East Avenue under construction, we'll double our efforts. We've already talked about it. Glad you raised it, though, with us. It's serious stuff. Item eight, trustee comments. Any trustee comments this evening? Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been wondering, and I've been recently asked for a bit of an update on the interesting flooding situation that appears to have been nicely resolved here on LaGrange Road. And I was wondering if we can get an update from Ryan, just on, just like a recap and where things stand, and whether it was fully resolved. Thanks.
So one of the things that we reported on earlier was that we noticed an unusual flow rate within our system, which affected our water accountability. I'm pleased to report that we were able to find a significant water leak at the intersection of LaGrange and Harris. We estimate that the water leak was somewhere between 150 gallons a minute to 200 gallons per minute. This resulted in an approximate, we don't have the final data yet, but somewhere between 15 and 20% increase in our water accountability, just on the particular days that we were measuring it. So we're pretty confident that we found a major leak in our system, and we hope that that will continue to show positive data for water accountability for the village's system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, trustee Augustine. Any other trustee comments this evening? Seeing on item number nine, we are going to move into closed session if the board so approves. We have another matter to discuss as it relates to an agreement we're looking at. And so, under section 2C5 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, to consider a purchase or lease of property for use of the village, and under section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss pending or probable litigation, I would request a motion to adjourn to closed session immediately following, and immediately following this meeting, adjourn as a village board not reconvening into open session, and no formal action would occur. Is there a motion?
I move we adjourn to a closed session.
Thank you, trustee Gail. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Augustine. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote?
Certainly. Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek?
Aye.
Trustee Kukler?
Aye.
Trustee McCarty?
Aye.
Trustee Gail?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you for being here. We will reconvene on a regular date of February 24th at 7:30.